Welcome, the hour being 5:30 PM on Wednesday, September 20th, 2023. The Tuilla City Council, the Redevelopment Agency are meeting in a work meeting. This is being held in the council chambers located at 90 North Main Street in Tuilla, Utah. This is also being streamed on the Tuilla City YouTube channel. We will start with a roll call. Councilwoman Manzio.
Present.
Councilman Hanson.
Present.
Councilman McCall.
Present.
I'm Councilman Brady, I'm also present. Councilman Graff has asked to be excused from tonight's meetings. We'll move on to item three, which is the mayor's report. We'll turn the time over to Mayor Witten.
Thank you very much, Chairman and Council. I have some really exciting news to report, and I know that some of you attended this event, but a couple of weeks ago, on Saturday morning, we did the ribbon cutting for the brand-new remodeled facility for the Boys and Girls Club. This is the Tuilla facility, it's the Greater Salt Lake Club, this is the Tuilla facility, and they have been operating in Tuilla City for a little over 20 years, out of buildings that were owned by the city that basically we shared with them. That is not the ideal way to have a Boys and Girls Club, and so it has taken several years to finally get enough money, but they have purchased and remodeled the building, and I would encourage anybody from the public just to go and see what they have done and the services that they will provide for these kids. The young woman in the front of the picture there that was cutting the ribbon, she's their Youth of the Year from the Tuilla Club, and then right behind her is Darlene Dixon, and Dar has been with Boys and Girls Club for 38-something years, lots of years, and in Tuilla City the whole time that they have been here, and they've waited a long time for this facility, but I will tell you, they care about those kids, and they will be able to serve hundreds of children there that maybe are alone after school, parents are working, and other circumstances, and I'll tell you, their success rate is high for these kids, and so I would just recommend anybody to go take a look at that. It was just a really wonderful event, and we're grateful that they are in Tuilla City, continue to serve our residents and the other citizens in the county, because they do go to Grantsville and other areas to pick kids up and bring them to the center, so it was just a very, very great day. Just the other item that I wanted to mention was that last week, a little over a week ago, several of us attended the Utah League of Cities and Towns Conference in Salt Lake City, and we attended a lot of the meetings that talked about planning and growth, and one of the sessions, Governor Cox talked to all of us about leadership, and he mentioned, again, that this month is called Constitution Month, and there's Constitution Day, which was September 17th, and it's a way to remind us that we should be grateful for where we live and the country that we live in, and it's easy to pick apart the government, and what we have to remember is that what makes us unique is that it's not the government that tells the people what to do, it is the people that decides what the government can do and what rights they have, and we have to remember that we have that right, especially when we're in a position that those rights are taken away, maybe if we're out in another country. So I just thought his words were very kind, interesting, and I appreciated that. He also is serving for a National Governors Association, and he is working with his vice chair on that committee on a new initiative that he has encouraged everyone to be able to disagree better, that we can disagree, but we need to do it better, and so I'm just reaching out to residents and anyone else to remember that we can disagree and we can talk, but let's do it better and be respectful of one another, so that's all I have for tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll move on to item four, which is the council members' report. We'll start with Councilman McCall.
I also attended the League of Cities and Towns, and it was interesting, and last week I also met with the candidate that's running for Chris Stewart's seat, and had a conversation with her about things that thought the city might need help with. That's about it. Oh, by the way, I'm officially locked that in my computer, so don't ask me. Third try didn't work.
All right, Councilman Hanson.
A couple of things, I, the Downtown Alliance had their festival, and it was a lot of fun. I only could stay there for a few minutes, but, because I had to leave, but looked like they had a lot of fun, a lot of success, a lot of people showed up, and so that's doing good, the Downtown Alliance is going strong. I went and actually seen the buffalo today that's being painted for in front of City Hall, and the lady that's doing it, and she's really close to being done, and it looks pretty cool, yeah, and so you'll have to look in its mouth when you see it, but she got something special there, but anyway, it's gonna be done pretty soon, and it'll be out here on this cement pad out front here, so.
Will it be done before Halloween, like the Downtown?
I would think so, yeah, I would think so, she's close, and maybe I can talk to her and give her that gold, so we can get it set up there before, then that would be cool, so lots of people could see it. Good idea, so I'll give her a call tomorrow and mention that, because I think she could do it, she's real close. And then I went to a board meeting for the Resource Center and talked to them about the Harris Project and the Resource Center up there, and it looks like it's getting really close, and there's gonna be, I don't know, you're all gonna be invited to like an opening thing, you know, an open house or something, here probably within the next three weeks, and then hopefully by the end of the year, they're all going strong, so they're getting close, it's looking good, I don't know if you've been up there at all or not, but it looks good, that's all I got.
Thank you, Councilwoman Manzio.
Yeah, I have a couple of things. I also attended the Utah League of Cities and Towns Conference, and we, one of the speakers there talked about them as Missing Middle Housing, and they actually had some books available, so I haven't finished the book yet, but once I'm finished, if anybody wants to use it, they're welcome to read it, it's an interesting book, and they talked a lot about collaboration and just things we could do better as cities with staff and planning commissions and developers even, and including them, the conversations to move things forward, it was a good conference. The Arts Council had a contest to find a new logo, and they have just voted on those that were, there were 15, maybe 15 entries, they were all really awesome, they just voted on one that will be the new logo, I'm sure that will be presented very soon, but it looks awesome, and then they approved two new murals that will begin really soon, hopefully before the snowfall, so be on the lookout for those. And then at Planning and Zoning Commission, there was a discussion on an upcoming, some upcoming building and some drive-throughs there, and they had some really good discussion about how the drive-throughs affect other businesses in the same area, and the parking in the area, and asked that we just put that on our radar to discuss, looking at that and seeing if we can improve that process, or how that happens better, because there were some real concerns with what was approved, but it did meet all the requirements for approval, so I just told them I'd bring that up. And then best thing I have to report is today I was able to read at Storytime at the library, I highly suggest it, if you haven't had the chance, I'll help you find books if you need help, but you should take the opportunity to go out there. There were a lot of kids at Storytime, like, I don't know, they counted, but at least 30 or more, and it was a fun time, and just read some stories and sing some songs or whatever you want to do, it's really fun, you should all take the chance. And last plug is, it is September, and school is back in session, so I would encourage everybody to join a local PTA. That's all I have to report.
Thank you. All right, it's been a month since we've met, so I attended a Council on Aging meeting on the 26th of August, we also had the Dow James Memorial that was dedicated, we're gonna talk more about that in the business meeting, there'll be a little presentation about that, but it was a great event, and then just my typical meetings that I attend, the mayor's staff meeting, and as always, I appreciate all that the staff does, and there's a lot of behind-the-scenes things that people don't see, and I know the staff cares a lot about this community. All right, we'll move on to item five, which is our discussion item, we have one discussion item, it's a discussion on a proposed code amendment regarding multifamily housing appearance standards, this is presented by Andrew Agard, the Community Development Director.
Thank you, Chairman Brady, members of the city council. I appreciate this opportunity to discuss this with you today. I think these are healthy things to do for a city, especially when it comes to exterior materials, because people's tastes and opinions change over time, building methods evolve, and costs change, and it's good to look at these things and see where we're at and what we need to do. Just as part of my presentation, I'd like to go over what the current requirements are for the, requirements are by ordinance for exterior materials for multifamily dwellings. Keep in mind, this does not apply to single-family residential, strictly to multifamily residential, and that would be townhomes, apartment buildings, condominiums, and so forth. The current exterior requirements aren't as cumbersome as one would believe, if you look at the slide, 50% of the total building exterior shall be brick or stone, that really is the only strict requirement the city has in regards to exterior building materials. And then there's also a requirement that on the front facade, 60% of the front facade shall be brick, what that means is that on the back facade, you could have 40%, or if you wanted to load up brick and stone on your front facade, you could have zero brick on your back facade, as long as the total is 50% of the building exterior. I just threw some sample pictures in here of some townhomes that are constructed exclusively out of brick, and then we have some townhomes that are constructed exclusively out of stone. There are many different types of brick, many different types of stone, our ordinance does not specify or get into the details of types of bricks and stone. So what can you do with the remaining 50% of the building exterior under our code as it currently exists? You could do stucco, there's a townhome with some stucco panels, and some metal paneling as an accent, you could do clapboard, which is also known as fiber cement, or hardy board, which has a siding appearance, here's some townhomes with hardy board being utilized. You could do board and batten siding, which is another form of fiber cement, but is more of a vertical siding, and here's some townhomes with board and batten being the primary exterior material. You can also use wood siding, here's an apartment building that is wood-sited. And then you can also use masonry block, I don't see a lot of this on our multifamily residential structures, in fact, I rarely see it, there's different types of masonry blocks, there's rough hewn, and there's smooth hewn, and they look good, you see them on quite a few commercial buildings, but I rarely see them on multifamily buildings. Here's a house that's using some rough hewn block, provides some great texture on the facade, and looks nice. And then, of course, there's vinyl siding, and you all know what vinyl siding looks like, here's some townhouses that have, the predominant material is vinyl siding. The current, the code currently does not authorize some other materials that are quite popular in the exterior facades of multifamily residential structures, metal panels, tile, aluminum siding, shake siding, glass panels, and a relatively new exterior material called Metal panels, there are various different types of metal panels that could be utilized on a building exterior, here is a, some townhomes that are predominantly metal, they have metal siding on the exterior, I think there's some fiber cement siding in there, but most of it's metal. Tile, you can use title on the exterior, tile on the exterior of a building, and there's all kinds of different types of tiles, here's some townhomes that have various types of tiling on there, some large tile panels and so forth, it looks pretty nice. Aluminum siding, now, most people consider aluminum siding to look pretty much like you'd see on vinyl siding, however, in doing my research, I discovered that there are a lot of types of aluminum siding that can go on a building, and it doesn't just look like the regular siding, there's a lot of things they can do with aluminum. This is a home that has large aluminum panels, provides a very unique and interesting appearance. Shake siding is a little complicated, shake siding has a strong resemblance to shingles, as you'd see on a roof, and they can be constructed out of just about anything, they can be vinyl, fiber cement, metal, wood. Currently, we do permit shake siding, however, our ordinance just doesn't address it as an approved exterior material. Here's a home that has the shake siding not only on the sides, but also it matches the shingles on the roofs, has the appearance of one exterior material. And then the composite cladding, if you've heard of Trex Materials in regards to, that they use on decking in lieu of wood, it's a composite of plastic, wood, and so forth, and the cladding is a metal endoskeleton that attaches to the building, and then they attach the exterior surface to the metal framework, and you can do just about any kind of material, wood, you could attach fiber cement to it, and so forth. Here's an image of some slate, some slate plating that they've used on the exterior of a home, looks pretty cool. And then this is an interesting one, these are terra, this is terracotta, so if you've, if you like to buy plants, it's the same material as one of those little orange pots, and they can put that on the exterior of a building, and they can do that with cladding, so those are some of the materials that our ordinance doesn't currently address. So in putting together this presentation, I wanted to do a little research on the cost of some of these siding materials. This was a difficult endeavor, because like in all situations, you have low end and you have high end, you can get low-end fiber cement siding, you can get higher-end fiber cement siding, you can get lower brick versus higher brick, and if you get a brick from a clay pit in Nephi, it's gonna be a little less expensive than a fancy brick from a clay pit in South Africa. So it's hard to put a general exact cost on it, but I found the ranges to be, I tried to include the ranges on this slide, so you'll see that vinyl siding is $7.50 up to $9.50 per square foot. The most expensive one that we had on this slide is the brick siding, which is $12.50 up to $22.50, and then some of the other materials that I discussed, metal siding is relatively inexpensive, $4 to $8 a square foot, and then glass paneling, if you wanted to have an apartment with a lot of glass on the wall, it's up to $60 a square foot. And one of the interesting ones was the aluminum siding, you'll note that it's $1.50 up to $7 a square foot, when doing a little more research on that, take for example that house with those fancy panels on it, aluminum could be up to $88 a square foot, so it could be the cheapest, but it could also be very expensive. And then in regards to longevity and durability, I did some research on that, read some studies, and I found this chart, which was very helpful to explain the life expectancy of some of the various sidings, you'll note that brick has 100-year-plus life expectancy, so if you're looking for durability, brick is your answer. What surprised me, however, was manufactured stone, it was at 50-plus years, now, 50 years is a long time, but only half of what brick is. The siding materials with the least durability are vinyl, plywood, we don't allow plywood, vinyl, aluminum, and then wood or composite siding, so that's how that plays out. Stucco on block is actually pretty good, 70 years, stucco on EPHAS panel is about 60 years, so stucco has some good durability behind it. So what exactly is the problem? As the city council knows, we're fielding requests for design deviations from the standard where we require the 50% brick on the exterior facades, and the, many developers are concerned that it's creating, it's making homes that are too expensive, they can't sell the homes, they can't compete with other developments in the city where the stone and brick requirement was waived because of some expensive improvements they did elsewhere on the site. And so the city council and the mayor asked me to bring forward some options and some alternatives to consider in regards to this situation. So is the city's 50% brick and stone requirement making homes too expensive to sell? Let's look at costs and see. So using the cost chart that I provided, based upon 2023 estimates that I, or 2023 prices that I acquired from various retailers, using this approved townhome, which is the Towns at Mountain View, and this is the one that has the design deviation request pending, this particular townhome has 2,500 square feet of stone on the exterior, and that's all four sides, not just the front. So if we take for the stone, if we take the low end of the stone and apply $14 a square foot, that material cost, just for the 2,500 square feet, is $35,000 on that townhouse. If we apply the low-end cost of a fiber cement siding and replace that 2,500 square feet with fiber cement, the cost would be $26,250. That would be a net reduction in price of $8,750. Just for fun, if we applied the $7.50 cost for the vinyl siding, that would be a cost of $18,750, which would be an overall reduction in the price of $16,250. Now, this is just for the part, or just for the cost of the material, this does not include the cost of labor, the cost of shipping it, however, whether you're doing vinyl siding, fiber cement siding, brick or stone, there's gonna be labor involved with whatever material, so I assume that the labor cost really wouldn't be as, wouldn't be as significant, there might be some differences, but nothing too significant. Really, this is focused on the cost of the materials itself. So does a reduction in price of $8,750 or $16,250 render a home affordable to the average native Utah? Can't answer that question, I could say for myself, no, I couldn't afford a home. But what about interior costs? There's other things that drive the cost of homes, how about Formica countertops instead of marble slabs, pine cupboards instead of mahogany cupboards, or maybe linoleum flooring instead of Brazilian wormwood. The issue here is, we can't see the interior of a home, but we get to see the exterior, we get to drive by the exterior, there's people that live next to it, and they get to see the exterior, so that's why our ordinance is designed to regulate the exterior materials on these homes. So what is the city to do? What can we do about this? So here are some options that I've thrown out for the council to consider, and I'm not gonna argue whether one is better than the other, I work for the city council, so however you want to proceed, we will proceed accordingly. But one of the options we could consider is to eliminate the requirements for brick or stone altogether, and the question you have to ask is, you want to provide a developer with carte blanche to do what they want, are they going to do what's in the best interest for the city, or are they gonna do what's in the best interest for their bottom line? Now, I don't fault a developer for wanting to make a profit, they need to make a profit on their project, and otherwise, they're not gonna build homes, and then we'd really be in a bad way, but we have to find a balance that preserves the interests of the city, but also helps the developers. So we could consider that requirement of eliminating that, we could also consider reducing the requirement of brick or stone to 10%, that could be of the entire exterior facade, or you could just require it on the front facade, so the front facade being the side that is most visible, and you could even up that amount for the front facade, we want 50% of the front facade, and they can do whatever they want on the other facades. And you can combine, say, number one with number three, let's say you eliminate the brick or stone, but they must use at least three types of siding from the approved list, they have to have wood, fiber cement, tile, or something like that, so maybe they don't have to do the brick or stone anymore, but they have to provide other elements to ensure aesthetically pleasing townhomes. And then you could also include another condition in this, is one material may not exceed 40% of total building facade, so they'd have to provide three materials to avoid having the townhome be one solid material, and I've got some examples here, I'll show. In my research, I looked for examples that would kind of fulfill, or would be the result of these changes if you were to consider those. This is a good mix of exterior materials, you note on these facades, there's some hardy board siding, there's some board and batten siding, I think there's even some stucco panels, some EPHAS panels on the front, the front unit there, and there's also some stone at the base, I would estimate the stone on these facades to be about 5%. This is what I would consider a poor mix, this facade is entirely board and batten siding, there is no variation, it's all the same thing, so it's hard to determine, there's no unit delineation, there's really nothing pleasing there to look at. This is a good mix, there's at least four materials on this one, you can see the wood shake siding, there's also some fiber cement, and then some fiber cement shake siding as well, good, good unit delineation, and it's pleasing to the eye, there is no brick or stone on these facades. This one is what I would consider a poor mixture, it's all board and batten siding, and the only variation is a couple of shades of gray, you know, it depends if you like gray or not, but. And then this one, I think, is a good, is a good mix, there's board and batten, some fiber cement, some shake siding, and then you'll see that they've got some stone, one of the unit has more stone around the garage than the others do, I would estimate that stone to be about 10%. Another example, what we probably don't want to see in our city, that is all vertical board and batten and fiber cement siding, no color changes, nothing. This one I really like, because if you look at the base of those buildings, you'll notice there's brick, but there's different types of brick, different apparent, different brick facades that add some visual interest to that, to that facade. This one I find to be quite pleasing, it has various materials, and they use the stone as accents on those columns in front of the buildings, so there's not a great amount of stone there, but they're using the stone as an accent material. Again, another one of relatively poor mix of materials, it's all stucco, it's all the same color. And then this one, various materials with stone accents, accenting the entrances into the building. So that's pretty much what I have to say on this possible ordinance amendment, we can do however the council pleases in regards to this, to these exterior materials, it's difficult because there's so many variables in regards to the cost of these materials, and does this really make a home affordable? You know, I, you all know how much things cost, and you all know the average household income for a family in the state of Utah. family in the state of Utah. And there's a lot of other issues involved in the, the price of a home, the land and the, the cost of all the, the wood and the building materials and so forth. And we just, I just want to make sure that we preserve the future interest of the city. These developers are going to finish their project, take their money and leave, and then we're, we're left with the project. And we're left with dealing with the issues that come with that. So that's my presentation. If the city council has any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them for you.
Turn this on. Okay, so this is just for like condominiums or twin homes or something, townhouses?
Townhouses and apartment buildings.
Okay. And so what, what, what is the rules on just regular housing as far as stone and brick go on that?
Correct.
Is there any or?
There are, but however, the state, the state of Utah, the state legislature recently passed a law that said, that basically revoked a city's authority to regulate design standards for single family homes. We still have an ordinance on our books to try and encourage maximum compliance for these architectural standards. In our ordinances, it's just 35% of the front facade needs to be masonry. And that could be fiber cement, stucco, brick, stone, doesn't have to be brick or stone. And the rest of the home could be vinyl.
Siding, whatever. Yeah.
I think there's a difference though between a single family home and a multifamily residential area though, because single family homes are broken up.
Agreed.
With like a yard or, you know, they're not usually the same house right next to each other versus a big apartment complex that is all a big.
I agree. I was just curious what that difference was and I get why it is different, you know, just because of what you said, but. And, and so when the, when the developer was in here a month ago and was talking about if we didn't change this, they couldn't afford to build their, their twin homes, but it appears that depending on what we, our rules, I guess I could, there can be a $25,000 difference, but that was for a, a large building like you in the picture, right?
Yeah.
The whole building.
Yep, that picture that I used with the cost. Let me get back to that. This one right here.
And so that was four families living there. And so you divide that by four, it's not very much per home, is it? Not really. I mean, it's four or $5,000 per home.
It would reduce it.
Yeah, it's what it would reduce it, so it's not a giant amount.
Wasn't it 16 condominiums there? Or was it 32 in that area out there?
I think it's 32.
Yeah, so I, I'm not, you know, I see the hardy board and I see all that stuff and I've seen your pictures and I, and when I go around and look at homes and stuff, I like a lot of that. You know, it is. And so maybe we do need to update something. Because it's, but it still needs to look good. Yeah, I mean, so you can't put still panels on it. It'll fill the whole place.
Because I was, the reason I asked about the 32, because you would need to take that figure that you gave and divide it by 16, which is basically what the developer would, would, it actually, it would cost them to do that. So it would, it would ultimately be more than, what was it, 28 or 30 something that you had? So it'd be that, it'd be well over 100 grand that he would, he would incur extra, you know what I mean? If we made him do it that way.
Divided by the number of units though.
Right, that's what I'm saying. It'd be that, that number that he gave us, which was for one four unit, we do it by, by 16, and that will be basically the amount of money that he would potentially save. Then comes substantial amount of money instead of just the 28. Could you put that slide back up, Andrew? The one that showed the, it was just before this one, I think. No, I can't remember.
This one? The prices, the cost?
No.
The savings?
No, the types of siding. That's what it was. The types of material.
Oh, the types of material?
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, I've got quite a few slides.
No, no, you're fine. It was right at the beginning of the presentation.
This one?
Where you were saying that we could have.
I think the life expectancy one showed all of them, didn't it? That slide?
And yeah, that one would show it too, yeah. I was just wanting to kind of compare them or look at them rather.
Almost there.
You were there.
Back to you.
It was the one they had before, things that we could do.
Oh, the options?
Oh, that option. Okay, yeah. There we go.
I don't know that I necessarily, I don't know if stone is like, we have to have stone or brick. I don't think that's where we're trying, that's not where I'm coming from, but I want something that lasts a long time, it looks good. Like you had said, Andrew, the developer comes, they build a house and then they leave the community, but we get to see that every day, right? I drive past apartments all the time because there's some near my house, really no matter direction, what direction I go, there's apartments or townhouses. There's some that only have siding. I think there's only siding on those ones and to me, they just don't look as nice. And so I think we do need some kind of either, I don't know what you said on the single family home, it's a cement or masonry, I think you said, a masonry requirement. So I think we need something like that. I don't know if it necessarily needs to be brick or stone. Or I also would be in favor of reducing the amount of brick or stone significantly. I mean, keeping it maybe down to 20% or something like that. We could discuss the figure that would be appropriate. I, I think we need some kind of masonry or brick or stone. And I would also be in favor of the, the third item where they, or maybe the fourth as well, where they can't exceed 40% of the total building facade. And that way they're required, it's forcing them to use multiple materials. So that's kind of where I'm at with it.
I agree with that. I mean, they don't look good with one, just one thing.
And you know, a lot of developers are already doing that. A lot of developers are already using multiple materials in their facades. So I don't think that would, that requirement would be overly burdensome to developers because they're already doing it. And I just wanted to add that we've been receiving some new building elevations for the development of Western Acres, for the townhomes up there. And I noticed that D.R. Horton is now putting stone on the front of their buildings again after going through the whole PUD process to remove that. So.
That's interesting.
I found that curious.
I, I honestly feel the bottom line is, and I agree with what these guys are saying, but maybe, just maybe they, they came to the reality that the ones that are lacking are not selling and the ones that have it are selling. Because if someone is going to spend the money to buy a home, they're going to buy something that they kind of sort of like. And if it looks like it's cheap and it's, you know, all, they're not going to buy it, even though the developer is trying to make as much money as they can. But I, I'm thinking they're, they're probably, which is why they're doing it, is because they probably figured, figured out that people are buying those homes even though they cost more, but they look good. And to spend, boy, now the average home is 350, 400, if not more. You're spending that kind of money.
And that's the cheapest one in town.
But this developer, he had said that the location wasn't a concern, that he didn't think, even if we had 50% brick, that just because of the location, it wouldn't sell for a higher amount is, that's what I remember him saying.
He did talk about that, yeah.
So I think locate, that's where I get frustrated is everyone comes to the council like we can fix housing overnight. That's not the case. We play such a small piece in it and I think as a council, we've done really well at approving townhouse projects and apartments and I feel like I could go to sleep at night, sleep just fine, knowing that I did my part to help with the housing crisis in Tula City. Obviously there's things that I, maybe more things that we could do, but I don't always feel like the developers are doing their part. Especially some of these big ones that are public companies and you can see how much money they make per quarter. I, I get a little frustrated seeing that they make billions of dollars while we suffer and we kind of take the heat for it sometimes, so. I don't know. I, I think we do plenty. I think we could adjust this a little bit, but I'm not going to go crazy on this and I wouldn't vote in favor of something that's reducing it significantly and allowing vinyl only or things like that, so.
I agree. And I think, yeah, I don't know, Andrew, maybe you could come up with some kind of suggestion for us of what you'd recommend we, because we don't want to go to, you're right, we don't want it to be zero.
If, if I were the city council and the, and the decision was mine, I would move for a recommendation of keeping at least 25% of the front facade, brick or stone, and letting them use at least three other materials not to exceed 40% on the rest of the building. That's where I would go. Keeping, keeping the brick and stone on the requirement. There's, there is a developer here tonight and he's, he's actually proposing some, he's taking over this design deviation request and he has some alternative elevations and he still has brick and stone on the front of his townhomes. He's just reduced it down a little bit. I think something like that would really be very, very helpful. Why put brick on the back of a building if no one's going to see it?
I'm a brick guy, I like brick, so.
Is there a way to say, there's those new apartments, the Lexington apartments, it's kind of hard to tell where the front is, right? You can see at least two sides of it driving down the road. So is there a way to say like on two sides that face the main street or things like that, we could say that? It's not just the front.
In fact, the ordinance already addresses that. It says any facade facing a public street and the front. So in a situation like that, they would be responsible to, to do, you could tailor the ordinance to say if you're facing a public street, you have to have 25% on your front and on the side, facade facing the public street. That's, that's easily done.
I, I would be okay with something like that.
I would be more in favor of something like that too. I think that the different types of materials make a big difference. And I think even just walking around the town, the city when I was campaigning, there's a distinct difference in, you know, in the areas that have the brick or the different kinds of materials on the buildings. They seem to hold up better and last longer and they look better.
I, I think that'd be a good compromise. That would, that would permit the reduction, help bring the cost down. But like Chairman Brady said, the city doesn't, we don't determine housing prices. Land values do. Cost of labor and cost of materials do. We have a very small part of the cost of a house. Even though the state legislature keeps beating us up, telling we're the cause of the problem, we're not. Our fees and, and what we require is a very small part of a, of the cost of a home.
I have a question about the wood siding, because the old days wood siding, I mean, you have to treat it all the time. Is the new wood siding that way still? Because if it is, I'm not a fan, you know?
Because you have to paint it all the time.
You have to paint it all the time? You have to stain it all the time or?
It just depends on what, what you buy. They have, they have engineered wood product that is.
Because that don't last at all really, unless you're going to maintain it.
And then you've got regular wood product that you have to treat and maintain. It just depends on what you buy. What you're willing to invest in.
Do we, we allow wood now on all of the things?
We do.
Does anybody use it?
It's more of just an accent material. It's not a, it's not a predominant exterior material.
You know, I'm an old man.
They might use it around their widow's.
I wouldn't want it on anything because I could have to maintain it, you know? I'd rather have stuff that's non-main, yeah, you don't have to maintain.
I think with townhomes or apartments, though, you want the longevity products, right? Because who pays for it, right? The renter's going to pay for it when they have to fix something, so.
That's why I was wondering if you even wanted, if you want to take that out.
Because you can pay upfront for the material or you can pay along the way as the, the maintenance.
You know, that's what I was wondering, if you want to take wood siding out of the equation completely.
That's what you want?
Just because it's a major maintenance, I don't know about.
I have no problem with that.
That's a suggestion of you guys, what you think, but.
I mean, we want developers to have the ability to, I want them to have the ability to go and choose and I don't want to dictate every little thing and that's not what we're trying to do. They're the professionals at building, but we still, I still want to see that longevity, a good looking product. And unfortunately, I don't think that always happens with some developers, but the majority are probably okay, right? But it always takes one person to, for any rule, right? That we have or any law. It's typically a, the minority that causes us to have rules in the first place, so.
Andrew, you have a lot to developers complain about this specific thing? I know we've had D.R. Horton was in here and the one before, but I don't know of any others.
I thought we had three?
We have three? You have another one?
I thought we had three.
I've had at least five developers express frustration with the requirement. Some of them have already built their townhomes and they've come in and said, well, I wish I had D.R. Horton's, you know, approvals and I would, I'd be able to market my townhouses better. And then I have to explain to them, D.R. Horton invested millions of dollars in the relocation of the drainage, had a special circumstance. But there's, there's quite a few that have expressed frustration.
Do you think they would be satisfied with the 25% stone or brick requirement? Is that still going to be too high?
Probably still be too high for some of them.
Do you think, like you're talking 10% range we need to be in?
No, I'd keep it around 20. I really would. That, like I said, if I was in your seats right now, that's where I'd go.
Well, you know, there is a big difference to D.R. Horton's point in investing in the community versus just building eight townhomes. You know, I mean, they have made, I mean, they did a lot of stuff. And I see other townhomes that come in and they're a pat on the back because they put in a top lot that's not like really an amenity. So there's something to be said for coming in and investing in the community.
Yep. And like I said, they're putting stone in their buildings now, so.
They're back doing it.
It's because it's popular.
Now, the individual that, that was last here, reducing this to 20%, whatever.
They were asking for removal completely from the masonry.
Okay, so they're, so I guess we will still have weeds up on the hill. Oh, that's right, it was weeds there before. Go ahead, I'm, I'm done.
So I, I think there's an agreement that we're willing to discuss a change, right? So I think maybe the next step would be maybe for the administration to recommend a change, then we'll come back and we'll talk about it again and go from there and.
If you'd like, I can throw together an ordinance amendment, bring it back to another work session.
I think that would be great.
And I like the pictures.
Like the pictures?
Yeah, because I'm a visual person.
All right, any other discussion on this topic? Okay, thanks, Andrew. We'll move on to item six, which is our closed meeting. We do have a closed meeting tonight to discuss litigation and property acquisition. I'll entertain a motion to move to a closed meeting.
Make a motion to move to a closed meeting.
And I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We'll take it to a vote. Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
Councilman McCall?
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, I also vote aye. We will recess and reconvene in the upstairs, the large conference room.